Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. So we are all present. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and give it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for each specific item. And we will begin tonight's special meeting with a closed session. Item number one, conference with labor negotiators. Now before we convene to close session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on item number one?
Madam Mayor, we have received no request to speak on this item.
Okay, well then I will close public comment on this item and let us adjourn. Thank you.
All right, we are coming back into session. And the second item of our study session is Historic Policy Work Plan and Timelines: Overview and Council Direction. And we are going to hear from Zachary Dahl, the Community Development Director. Director Dahl, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Let's, there we go. All right. My name is Zach Dahl, Director with the city's Community Development Department. And this evening, I'm presenting on the topic of Historic Policy to receive direction from council. So for tonight's study session, I wanted to provide a brief overview of kind of the background that led to this discussion this evening, kind of how General Plan 2040 addresses this topic, and then lay out a couple options for council consideration. This will be followed by public comment, then any council clarifying questions and discussion, and ultimately, direction on which option council would like staff to proceed So a little bit of background on the city's historic policy context. A lot of the work was originally done back in 1989, when there was some preliminary context work done to establish kind of the historic context within the city, as well as various recommendations on eligible districts and individual properties. This ultimately led to the establishment of the city's downtown historic district, as well as the Glazewood Historic District. In addition, we also have the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance, which is in our zoning code. And then this is reinforced through our current general plan, General Plan 2040. And then it's spoken to specifically in our downtown area plan, which includes the downtown historic district, and there are also downtown historic district design guidelines that are supported through the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which specifically references it. In addition, the California Environmental Quality Act also has certain requirements for when a property is potentially historic, and it must be evaluated for impacts as part of any development proposal. During our general plan update process, there was a meaningful discussion around what would go into a historic policy update. We did identify that our Historic Preservation Ordinance was in need of an update, and then that led to a series of policies and actions that were included in the general plan. Also, which spurred local community discussion, was the Baywood Historic District nomination that was submitted to the State Office of Historic Preservation this past fall. And then that discussion kind of spurred additional city resources to provide clarity and updates on the process, the ramifications of a historic designation, and its implications, both in terms of development approvals and environmental review. We also did hold an informational community meeting this past February to answer questions and provide an overview, and then we've been building and maintaining a website with additional information, FAQs and other information, to support information on what goes into historic preservation, and the tools, as well as the state and federal context. Within General Plan 2040, historic resources are addressed within the city, within the community design and historic resources element, and there is a specific section that focuses on historic resources. We have an overarching goal, and then a number of policies and actions that would support achievement of that goal. I think of most interest are these two policies, which would guide a historic policy effort, and it speaks to that comprehensive approach to historic preservation, as well as what historic preservation means within the city's context. And you can see that map, just a snapshot of the either designated or eligible historic resources that have been identified around the city. Then moving on to the actions within the general plan, these are kind of the specific tasks at hand to help us achieve these policies and implement the overarching goal. And I think really the first two here, which is an update of our Historic Preservation Ordinance, as well as the establishment of a current historic resource context statement, are the two actions that we're seeking guidance on how they should be prioritized this evening. So looking, moving forward to look at the different options, as we seek input on how to move forward with this historic policy work, option one would be to prioritize implementation of these two actions. This would include a comprehensive update to the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance. As we've discussed and has been identified, it needs to be updated to align with state and federal requirements, as well as comprehensively address how a resource is designated, how a historic district could be designated, as well as the development review process when a project is proposed on a historic property. So this would establish the framework. Then to inform that framework would be the preparation of a citywide historic context statement. What this does is really identifies the history of San Mateo and helps decision makers understand what are the areas that the community wants to prioritize for preservation, whether you're looking at certain eras, maybe there's individuals of local significance, certain architectural themes. This is where we kind of differentiate between what might be an old structure and what is an old structure that has merit and historic significance worth preserving. And then along with that, we would be updating all of our internal processes to support full implementation here. And as part of this, I do want to highlight, everything outlined in option two would be included as part of option one. So all of those internal processes that were articulated there, they would be achieved here. So really, we're setting the table with updated policy, and then putting together the internal processes to support full implementation of that policy. Because this is a public policy discussion, and there's meaningful community interest, we would include a robust public outreach and engagement component as part of this effort. This would include early engagement with stakeholders, community meetings, probably some, a study session or two with council, and then the appropriate public hearings along the way when it came time to adopt updated ordinances. This is still preliminary if this option was selected. We would put together a more robust and comprehensive plan for how this would be achieved. But overall, this type of effort would require staff from the Community Development Department, City Attorney's Office, as well as the City Manager's Office, and we would be retaining a qualified historic consultant to support the effort. While these are estimates, we are gauging, it could take 12-plus months to complete, depending on the nature of the issues raised, how long it took for us to get through some of them, and could cost around $500,000 to complete. And this is including consultants, staff, and other associated costs. Option two would be to focus on updating our internal historic processes, but not proceeding with implementation of an updated Historic Preservation Ordinance or preparation of a historic context statement. So what this would really focus on is building out and maximizing our internal process based on the policies and codes that are currently on the books. And there's definitely room to create these processes, whether it's how a individual historic property could be designated, really mapping out the different steps in the process, creating screening criteria, as well as other pieces that we could do internally. And this would be properly creating a historic resources inventory for all of the properties that have been identified in the past, and putting them in one place, and then creating a website that made all of this information very accessible. So this would still entail retention of a historic consultant, and probably take six to nine months to complete, with a price tag of around $100,000. The public outreach would really focus on engagement after the work was done, because this is really technical work, to align, to use existing codes on the books, there's not necessarily policy discussion or discretion. And so this is really more working to align our local processes, what could we do based on the codes that are on the books? And then alignment with state and federal policy, then once we're done, rolling it out, answering questions, and receiving feedback. So that would be a more focused outreach and engagement component as part of option And then option three would be to maintain the current prioritization for actions CD 5.8 and 5.9. Right now, in the general plan's implementation plan, these two actions are identified as short-term priorities, so they're still something that we need to address in the near term. But their prioritization would be seen as something that would occur within the next five years, with that exact timing depending on when council chooses to prioritize them. Staff would still continue with ongoing work to maintain and augment our resources, adding information to our websites, but we wouldn't dedicate additional staff resources or funding to this effort under option three. So basically, I'm happy to elaborate further, answer any additional questions, but the feedback that staff is looking for this evening is, which option would council like staff to proceed with? And that's option one, two, or three, with, from full implementation to maintaining current So that does conclude my presentation. I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Director Dahl. That gave us a good basis for discussion and decisions. So why don't we open it up for public comment now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you wish to speak on this item, and would like to speak on this item, and you haven't already, please provide me with the yellow request to speak slip. If you are attending remotely and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. We'll give you a few moments to do so. All right, Madam Mayor, that's a total of 10 requests to speak on this item, so per council rules and procedures, that'll be three minutes, so 11 requests to speak. So that'll be two minutes per speaker. So if I call your name, if you could please come up and line up to my right, that would be greatly appreciated, and we'll announce the next three speakers. First speaker will be Frank Elliott, followed by Lori Watanuki, and Sean Farrenbarch.
And that was 11 speakers total online, as well as in...
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So that's two minutes per speaker.
How many? Okay, thank you. Thank you, that was a great presentation, very helpful. Just a couple reactions to the presentation. One is, when I see architectural historian in the process, one thing I think might be worth adding is a land use attorney. That's the other side of this, when you get through it, the architectural historians aren't necessarily knowledgeable about the downstream issues with respect to historical designation, so that's something I would ask to be considered. I am not in support of, at this point, in support of a local designation process, and I've sent an email to the entire council explaining why. I think it'd be helpful for the council to know that I have reviewed every approved California historic nomination since 2009. That's as far back as it goes. In my opinion, the bar is low, and most of San Mateo neighborhoods could be designated historic, $55,000 apiece. Neighborhoods that include Sunny Bray, North Central, Hillsdale, and Shoreview. Each of these neighborhoods played an important role in the development of San Mateo and deserves some recognition. But do they deserve historic status? Is that good for San Mateo? If we're going to the OHP, it doesn't matter what we think, residents and city council have no say. Unless the city council takes a stand, Anna Heritage Alliance or a future successor can decide which neighborhoods to nominate, and pay consultants to push them through. Consultants who don't live here, the OHP who doesn't live here, and they're all immune from the downside problems this might create. So I'm really urging that the city council try to do something to make this a local process, and the first step is to try to have influence on a heritage alliance, it could be the current one, it could be a successor. And I think before doing anything on a local process, we need to agendaize a policy regarding bypass nominations.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Sean, and apologies if I'm mispronouncing your name, I have Kolja Schletnitter. And our last speaker on this item will be Jeremy Levine.
Mayor Diaz Nash, and members of the City Council, my name is Lori Watanuki. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts in historic preservation. I strongly support option number one, which prioritizes 5.8 and 5.9, where adequate focus will be given to address historic preservation citywide, and to give neighborhoods a plan from which they can work. Options two and three will not provide enough guidance across the city to have that effect. And we need clear and comprehensive process to guide historic designations. We need a consistent approach for surveying and identifying eligible historic resources. The Historic Preservation Ordinance needs to be brought up to date. The San Mateo Building Survey has not been updated since 1989, which is over 35 years. And usually, this is updated every five years, and this is long overdue. The Yoshiko Yamanochi District in the central neighborhood needs to be added to the building survey. And eventually, Baywood, when it completes the process, needs to be included. It's important for San Mateo to maintain its special historic identity and to do this citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sean, followed by Kolja and Anna Kier.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. As I look at these three options, and I realize that we're looking into some deficit spending going forward, spend $500,000, it just doesn't make any sense to me. For me, I'm grateful I live in Baywood Knowles and not Baywood, because I'm not subjected to this nonsense right now, quite grateful for that. But there's nothing says it couldn't be tomorrow, and I'm quite terrified of this, because this is something I just would not want to see on my property. So I would like to just kind of emphasize that no matter what option you have here, it does nothing to allow someone to bypass the city council and go to the state. It's like, there's got to be something from this council that is basically reprimanding people that do this. There has to be a center involved with this, there has to be some disincentive to, that pushes people from doing this. And I would hope that the city council recognizes that we can't have people going around the city council on this. And if it does, one thing I would like to see from the city councils, before we put any teeth in this, you know, to what they can, there should be a consent, a two-thirds consent, not just a vote to say, hey, 35 people showed up and 25 voted for it. There shouldn't be an act of consent from people. I'm going to just stop there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kolja, followed by Anna Kier and Jay Kier.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to express my strong opposition to any spending on historical preservation initiatives. The city... The city faces far more pressing issues and already has a process for historic preservation. We are grappling with a bleak financial outlook, unable to properly maintain and renovate our public parks and playgrounds. We, if we cannot fund essential services, it is irresponsible and simply not a priority to allocate any funds toward historical preservation. Additionally, city departments are severely understaffed, making the additional workload from historic surveys and other items unfeasible. I do, however, support updating existing guidelines to ensure no historic districts are established without a two-third voter majority in the affected areas. The city should also automatically oppose any state or federal historic district applications that bypass our local process to avoid another outcome like the recent Baywood application, which has caused considerable division in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Anna Kier, followed by Jay Kier and Jean Alston.
Hi, council. I'm Anna Kier. This is a picture of my home that was provided to me by the alliance. Thank you. It allowed me to enlarge the picture of my home. Mine home is considered a contributor, noting that the only change was the front door. All of these red circles are the changes in my home. I actually have more changes that have been taken place, thanks to this original photo, than Lisa Nash's home, who is a non-contributor. Mine should be a non-contributor, too. Drive-by assessments don't work. You can't drive by and say, this is what the historic dealings are with this house. Okay, council members come and go, but the damage left behind on citizens and staff can continue for years. Guard your legacies well, because the voters are counting on you and can replace you. A poorly-written ordinance will place San Mateo in acrimony for years to come. Be very cautious, because historic ordinances have been rescinded within two years in some cities due to public outcry, due to added unnecessary red tape and expense to the good citizens that live there. And we also have good ordinances in place right now. Political careers have been launched on historic ordinance, problems like this. Many cities pass on these assessments because the subject is considered very divisive, expensive, and counterproductive. Emergency arise, and public safety is always a priority to our citizens. We know this. The voters want a voice in the disposition of their properties. They want exemptions allowed. This is commonly done by other councils that care about community harmony. Do surveys and respect the majority. Build consensus. Help the citizens you represent feel that they're being heard and give them a voice, just the way Councilmember Newsom said when he called into the county and said, tell the citizens to come to the council, and we'll hear them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Jay Kier, followed by Jean Alston and Timothy Elliott.
Unfortunately, communities with no real historic relevance are being declared historic. Experts are hired to cobble together common design and construction practices into fairy tales that check qualification boxes in a subjective system, which is then arbitrarily administered. An application can contain numerous errors. There is no audit process to ensure accuracy. And yet, nearly 100% of the nominations that are submitted to the OHP are eventually approved. For communities like Baywood, historic districting is pursued primarily to avoid high-density housing laws, lot splits, and McMansions in their neighborhood. Regardless of how good a proposed project is for the area, supporters of, quote, "history" simply don't want to see anything changed. That is an abuse of an otherwise honorable system. I recommend that San Mateo City Council take every measure possible to keep the decision-making process of what is or is not historical out of the hands of misguided individuals, organizations, and agencies. Please ensure the rigors of historic designation are improved by only supporting resources that have true historic value, and the owners are willing to take on the burden of protecting them. In addition, San Mateo City Council must actively object to the OHP SHRC regarding the nomination of Baywood and all other nominations submitted with erroneous assessments. Council silence becomes city acceptance of those erroneous assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jean Alston, followed by Timothy Elliott and Tom Lees.
Thank you, esteemed council members, for the opportunity to talk on this issue. I won't echo the other speakers. I think they were really good at talking about some of the, some of the challenges with proceeding with this. But, you know, I'll just emphasize that undertaking this work for local ordinance is a waste of money, especially in light of our priorities and the really tight budgets. We keep on hearing the vehicle license fees going away. We are in shortfall. That deficit's only getting greater next year. And so I think, just on the basis of prioritization, this fails. So I support option three. What I'd also hope the council members consider is, there is still quite a bit of confusion with San Mateo Heritage Alliance's current application. We don't know how that process is going down with the state. We don't know what's happening at the national level. All this is bypassing the local process. I think we would all embrace a local process, where we're all embracing a local process. That means no bypass application. So I strongly encourage city council to, in the future, counsel any groups that want to submit individual nominations, to encourage them to get consent, two-thirds consent, like other communities, or putting a nomination in the process. And so I, just a few ideas for you to consider, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Timothy Elliott, followed by Tom Lees and Lisa Vandevord.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, city council members. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm encouraged to see that this conversation is happening. This is long overdue, and many have been calling for this, bringing the historic resources and preservation issues to a local forum where all stakeholders can be involved. I have been beating personally the drum of inclusiveness and transparency and openness as we confront these issues. We obviously have a very divisive application that has been submitted through the state. And as the prior speaker acknowledged, we, we don't have a lot of insight about that or the process. One of the things that concerns me the most here, it was echoed by an earlier speaker who said that there should be a consistent application of a citywide historic ordinance. If we continue on the current route with local doing part of the historic ordinance updating, nonetheless, while the current Baywood application nomination stays at the state level, we will inevitably end up with two different and potentially conflicting and contradictory historic resource preservation schemes. Is that what we want? Or do we want consistent application across the city that is, derives out of an open, transparent, and inclusive process that involves homeowner consent? I hope you agree that it's the latter and that you will object formally to the continuance of the Heritage Alliance nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Tom Lees, followed by Lisa Vandevord and Lori Heater.
Hi. I have a Tehran shirt here, and I've been there many times. And when I go there, I visit mosques that are 2,000 years old. And after the revolution, even the mullahs kept the Shah's palaces intact. So I've got to visit the Shah's palace. Now, I'm not saying our historic Baywood or other historic resources are on that level. But I think it's very important that, and just for good governance, that we spend the $500,000 to do something that we should have done in 1994, 1999, 2003. I mean, every five years. And I think there's a lot of scare, scaremongering going on here, that although everything's going to fall apart if we just take an inventory. And I agree that we should do the same thing with our trees. This is an important investment for our future. And I don't think lot splitting and McMansions are a good asset to our community or is a right for anyone to destroy the, the character and beauty of neighborhoods for profit. So what we have is we have beautiful neighborhoods established a long time ago, and we have people that want to monetize neighborhoods, which is okay, I guess, making money. But I mean, my friend, some friends in San Carlos have these McMansions near these old 1940 craftsmen's houses. And that's just not right. So I hope the council will do the right thing and take option one and do the inventory. And we take a deep breath and also work with the other side and try to make everyone just a little bit unhappy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lisa Vandevord, followed by Lori Heater.
Good evening, city council. My name is Lisa Vandevord. I'm here to ask you tonight that you prioritize option number one as you proceed with updating the city's historic resources policies and ordinances. I'm pleased to understand that this would also include the elements of option two, which makes it quite comprehensive. The city cannot afford to delay. Think back to the 1980s, when downtown was designated as an historic district. At that time, those buildings were between 80 to 100 years old. And thank goodness, we protected them. So now, the jewels of the past still shine today. Consider the fact that now, with much of our city built out between 1920 and 1940, we again have many unique properties representative of the period that are, that is between 80 and 100 years old. Don't they deserve the same protection? Again, it is up to the city to take steps to save these historic resources that cannot speak for themselves so that they shine for future generations. Please take this opportunity to lead and to be a model for the rest of the county by choosing option one tonight. The time is now, when the community interest is high and before more history is lost. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker in chamber will be Lori Heater.
Hi, good evening, council members. Thank you so much for holding this session. This is something we've been working for for a really long time. San Mateo has so many wonderful historic resources that, you know, of varying degrees of importance. But it's important for the city to understand what the resources are and what's important to save. I think option one is absolutely the right way to go. We fully support that. The Heritage Alliance would be pleased to work as hard as we can to, with the city and the community, to come up with an historic resource ordinance and process that works for everyone. I think that the cost estimate may be a little bit high. The city of Mountain View actually did a whole citywide survey and an update to their historic ordinance for substantially less, more around $200,000. And I realize we have a tight budget, but if we don't do it now, when will we do it? Time's going. We've lost four homes in buildings in the last couple of years. How many more will be lost if we wait another five years for this to happen? But I also want to thank the city for updating your website and getting more accurate information out there for the community. I think there is a lot of problems with inaccurate information and lack of understanding. So I think the city's workshop was helpful. The new information on the website is also very helpful. So I just hope that you will do the right thing and take the comprehensive approach that option one offers. It's a goal of the general plan. And I think option one will get us where we need to be and help bring the community together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker on this topic will be Jeremy Levine. Jeremy, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, council members, and thank you, staff, for that excellent presentation. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council. HLC's goal, our mission, is to work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. And to that end, we have been following the historic district process at Baywood and increasingly around the state just to understand the implications of historic districting for housing. Now, I'm not going to get into all those implications. I think that's a complicated discussion. I'm just going to say that we actually don't have very good information on historic districting around the state. There are local databases. There's the state registry, the national registry. There's no place where all this information is in, is combined. And the state doesn't even have a publicly accessible database where you can see and compare districts. There is a new bill moving through the state legislature, AB 2580, that's going to require cities in their housing elements to report on historic districts and to analyze historic districts as a constraint to housing. And I think that until that information is available, until we actually understand how widely historic districts are being used and more broadly, how they affect housing, the city council should pause. the city council should pause. There are other reasons others have mentioned, budgetary constraints, the burden staff already have before them implementing the housing element. But I think one more consideration is that we really don't have good information on what's going on statewide or even regionally with historic districts. So, thank you for your time tonight, hearing all the comments. I'm looking forward to your discussion.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I will close public comment now, bring it back to council for questions and discussion. So who would like to start first? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation, Zach. So the last real inventory was 1989, after the 89 earthquake. Is that accurate?
That is correct. The city's mounted one, yes.
When we look at Glazened Wood, which is a historic neighborhood already, is that recognized by the state or the city?
That is a question we're still trying to figure out exactly. It appears, the record indicates, it was designated locally, but we've actually not been able to find that designating resolution as of yet, but everything indicates it was designated locally, but we're still trying to track down that exact record.
Do we have a inventory of the homes that make up that neighborhood?
We do, yes. We have information about those homes, which are resources, which are contributors.
Okay. When it comes to your actual estimates, I know they're just estimates, but if we had wanted to add a land use attorney, do we have any idea what that additional cost would be?
Well, there are samples of local historic ordinances from around the state. I mean, we do have the in-house capability of doing research and drafting ordinance, but I think what the Community Development Director was referring to is hiring a historic resources consultant to provide additional information as to what other cities are doing around the state. It's not so much a question of reading the statute or the secret regulations or other regulations. It's a question of drawing on that experience that, where a consultant can identify what has worked in other cities and what is not.
I see. Thank you. As terms of public outreach engagement, would we be doing that with both option one and option two?
It would be primarily under option one. Option two, we imagine some outreach more at the backend, since it would be more of a technical exercise to update and strengthen our processes based on the existing codes on the books, because there isn't necessarily a policy discussion to engage with at the front end. But yeah, it would be much more robust with option one.
Well, I appreciate that. And you mentioned in your presentation, and again to me earlier today via email, that it would probably be about $500,000 or less for option one, $100,000 or less for option two, and no net difference for option three. Of that, how much of that would be coming from consultants versus from our existing staff, if you had to guess?
It's tough to say exactly. I could see a decent chunk coming from staff and associated resources, especially with option one, because we do imagine there'll be the robust community outreach, so there's logistics, there's other pieces. So there's definitely a staff component to that. We don't have exact estimates. We would need to do an RFP process for a consultant. So those are approximate estimates, looking at, for option two, maybe 50/50, option one, maybe a third consultant, but it's pretty variable, because we'd have to scope out exactly what they would be working on.
Thank you. As far as equity, if we, if we did roll out, you know, option one, would there be an opportunity for better equity across the city as opposed to only in neighborhoods that can afford it? Or is there, is there an argument to be made there?
So I guess maybe when you say equity, are you referring to outreach or where resources are designated?
Where resources are designated. Sorry, I should have clarified that. So, I mean, for example, when I look at the list, and there's not a lot of listed on the city websites of potential historic sites, it seems to be that they're concentrated primarily in the more expensive and affluent neighborhoods. I ride around my bike, I ride around my car, I see that there are potentially historic, you know, buildings in my own district. How, how would we ensure that everyone that wants to be deemed historic has that ability?
I think the preservation ordinance updates would be important, but really, I think we would get into that with our historic context statement, because that's going to look citywide at the city's history. What's important? What are the priorities? What are the trends? Notable local individuals of significance, architectural styles of significance, and so all of those would play into how we would prioritize preservation around the city, and that would include all parts of the city.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Who would, Councilmember Hedges?
Okay, so I'm probably going to do both, ask questions and microphone.
Yeah, microphone.
What an excellent report. Thank you very much. It's very precise. The question of equity that was just raised, I also had the question, but I think a little differently. Wouldn't it be more likely that people of lesser means could afford to take part in making their community historic if we had it on the local level, where the rules were already set clear in the general plan?
That could be the case. I think that would be part of the process to determine how we would do that, and if we wanted to prioritize that type of accessibility, we could look at ways to make sure that could be achieved.
Okay. And option one is the only option where we would have community outreach?
Yes, and we would have some as part of option two, but it would be more backend once we rolled out our updated processes and resources available to the community.
So others have probably heard me say, because I'm not bashful about saying it, that my great-great-great-grandfather's house is still standing. It's in Virginia, was built in 1747 and served as a supply depot during the Revolutionary War. So I'm of mixed minds about historic districts. Obviously, I think many of us are. But I think one thing that needs to happen is that we have a community conversation where everybody can weigh in on both sides of this, or maybe more than one, two sides at some point. So the option that I've been looking at, and I looked through this very carefully, I think the only thing, and I think you've clearly stated, that allows for that community outreach and for the community to have an impact is through option one. And I know we've got a tight budget, but this has been promised to the community since the late 80s, and I think it's time for us to do an inventory of the resources to make sure that no mistakes are made, that neighborhoods are judged solely on their historic responsibilities for this city. And also, I want to add, I know there's a lot of fear of lot splittings, and I just want to make it clear, because I follow this, that there has not been one successful lot split for a fourplex anywhere in the Dine area of the region. And the reason for that is the law itself, which requires you to live in it for three years, and also is so costly to buy the property to do the lot split. So that's not an issue that should even be considered when we're going forth for a historical district, because it really has no basis. Is it, SB 9 has been around for, I think, eight or nine years now, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, and it's been plenty of time to do this. There's been two lot splits in this city, and it's been in North Central, and it's been for single-family homes. Why do I know that? Long before I got on the council, I get all of those great negative declarations that you send out, and it really lets you know what's going on with the city. So I don't think there's any real danger of that happening. Maybe a greater danger of a house being torn down and a larger house built, I'll admit that. So I think where I'm standing with this is that our community has been so divided as over this, and everybody in the, in the county knows this. There's even been a comment in an editorial by the Journal on how divided the city is from several aspects. We need to start bringing this city back together, and for that, I choose option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Zach, for your presentation. I did just want to ask, when we, when we're talking about the type of staff work that would be required for option one or option two, in addition to what we've already essentially put forth in the general plan via option three, what, what sort of work, what sort of priorities from the general plan might be delayed or displaced as, if we were to go ahead with option one or two? To the best of your knowledge...
There wouldn't, choosing any one of these options, but particularly option one or two, wouldn't delay or displace any of the other actions on the general plan implementation plan. What it would do was add cost, because the other piece that would contribute to the cost for option one would be that because we're allocating more staff resources to support this effort, we would need to be looking to more contract planner support for processing applications, single-family, a lot of the other day-to-day work, because really, you can't necessarily bring in contract planners for this type of work. You need your in-house staff, because that's going to be the most effective way to go. But we will need to augment our staff with contract planners, so that our building permit review, our planning application review can continue on. And so that's kind of contributing to that price tag, again, that cost for option one in particular, as well. To a lesser degree, option two, that could be more folded in within our existing team, but really, for option one, we wouldn't be seeing any other priorities delayed or displaced, but we would be seeing the added costs of needing more staff to keep all of our day-to-day operations going.
I see. That's helpful. So maybe just to continue on that for a moment, if, if we were to pursue option three instead of one or two, would it be fair to say that it might end up costing the city less overall? Because the idea might be that rather than trying to add this priority onto the other priorities we've already established and hiring contract staff to allow that to happen, we might be able to plan out our current staff's bandwidth and timeline such that we don't have to incur those costs?
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable assessment of, in terms of how, I mean, there's going to be costs when we come to do it because of what will go into it, but yeah, I think there could be cost savings along that vein.
So if I may just add to that through the mayor, I would also just, you know, supplement what Zach said with just the thought that we are talking theoretically, that we would be able to add that staff, and that the consulting firms that we use would have the staff available to augment our staff at the level of skill and experience that we would need to work on the applications that we have in the queue at the time, keeping in mind that with the adoption of the general plan, we may see an influx of more applications, and so we may also be busier, and so we may see an increase in volume. And we haven't had the easiest of times in getting staff to augment our staff lately. I think just as much as we have had trouble attracting and retaining some of our planners, our consulting firms that we use have experienced the same thing over the past several years. And so I would say that one unforeseen thing that we could possibly see is some delay in, in staff response times. And so I would also say that while we're working to streamline, maybe we wouldn't see a delay in a specific priority or policy implementation, but we, we could see a delay in the time that it takes staff to respond to customers or to review projects and to the rate at which we can turn around some of our applications and our reviews and, and just respond to customer increase.
Mayor, those are, those are my questions.
Okay.
I, I have, I may have some comments, but perhaps, and I can give those comments at your preference.
All right. Well, why don't we, since we gave Deputy Mayor Lewis the opportunity to ask questions without comments, I think it's fair to offer that as an option. So if you wish to wait, we'll come back again.
Thank you.
Director Dahl, I have a question about this issue of bypassing the local ordinance. Is it, is it the case that the city is contemplating spending half a million dollars for an expedited timeline when we have around 20% vacancy rate at the staff level? We're contemplating a delay in customer service due to potential constraints on capacity, and moving forward with this option could also, could also mean that we advance a policy that can still be bypassed at the state level?
Yes. A property owner or group can always choose to go to the state. No local policy could prohibit that from happening.
Okay, then I would like to ask my council colleagues a direct question. If you are, if you are choosing to potentially support a half a million dollar expedited timeline to advance this process, when the city is facing a $10.6 million deficit and an ongoing structural deficit, given the current financial constraints and the discontent in the community, will you go on record supporting a local process and formally and vehemently opposing any applications that bypass our local process?
And I would say, right now, we're asking questions about this particular program.
Madam Mayor, I have the floor, and I am asking my council a question directly, because I think that this is a policy conversation, and this is a decision that we need to understand. What are we asking of ourselves and each other? If we're choosing to move forward with a local process that, per the advice of our city staff, can be easily and demonstratably bypassed, what does that mean in terms of our position, our council's position, our collective position on any application that supplants our own local ordinance that we would be investing half a million dollars in when we are facing an egregious deficit of over $10 million? I would like to know from my council...
Through the mayor, I'll answer that.
Please.
So my, my feeling is, and I'll be happy to do it here, is that we ask the Heritage Alliance or any other alliance to step down while we're doing this and use the city program. And most of the alliance people that I know that have been here tonight want option one. So if they want option one, they should agree to do this, so that we can get it done and use that system.
So let me understand, and I appreciate you chiming in transparently, I think that's very important, so the community understands where we stand. So am I clear in your position being that you would formally request the San Mateo Heritage Alliance withdraw their application?
Yes. If we go forward to this and spend half a million dollars, yes.
And if they choose not to withdraw their application, are you committed to taking a formal position of opposition to their application when this comes for consideration to council?
If, I would have to think that through more carefully, but I would lean that way if and when, after, at their request tonight, to go forward with this, then they went ahead with the application.
So in this situation...
Let me, let me finish. I tend really not to get in the middle of things like that, because it's not my place to do normally, but I'm saying that I would lean toward that if we go forward with this after it's been requested, and they weren't willing to put that application on hold at least.
Well, can I provide some background? The San Mateo Heritage, when I was mayor, I formally requested that the San Mateo Heritage Alliance withdraw their application. And I, I proposed that we consider this, this policy and advancing this policy with a hope that they would, by their own volition, offer to withdraw their application. My understanding is that they have repeatedly refused to withdraw their application. They have only so far as agreed to pause their application. So a pause is where we are right now. A withdraw has not been agreed to.
So I'll just say this, I don't think anybody should have two bites at the apple.
What does that mean?
It means if they want a system like option one, they should withdraw their petition.
And if they refuse to withdraw their petition, are you willing to consider agreeing to on record opposing their application?
I'm not willing to go there right now, because I, it would take all of the information that happens at the time for me to make that decision.
Okay, I would like to hear from my other council members.
I would like to, let me, let me go first. Thank you very much. I would like to bring it back to what has been said here tonight. What I have heard here tonight from supporters of the Heritage Alliance and supporters of the opposition or less red tape is that everyone is interested in transparency, accountability, and developing clear information, that so much of what has happened to date over the past year, confusion and frustration has been done because of lack of a complete ordinance, including staff that's had to come back and try and come up with answers when you have an incomplete historic ordinance to work with. So I think we are working with half of a baked cake at this point. I've also heard a great deal of fear about developing historic regulations that will stifle individual property owners' rights.
Through the mayor, madam, I was not, I was not complete. I was, I had not finished my comments, and per our code of conduct, the process is, is that each one of us has an opportunity to speak. My opportunity to speak has not come, has not completed. And, and I hear you giving your remarks. If you would like to continue, that, that is, you know, your, your desire and your prerogative, but I want to be clear that at this point, I am still, I'm still in the middle of my comments.
And I appreciate that. I was trying to respond to what you were saying. City manager, is there something you wish to say?
Just asked to complete the comment, and then we can move forward.
Who?
To the...
To the...
Councilmember Lee.
Okay. Please go ahead then.
Thank you. So I, I had asked, as per my, as, as I was saying before, I am raising what I consider to be a very concerning issue, which is that we are contemplating investing half a million dollars to advance a policy ahead of our agreed timeline. The agreed timeline, per the general plan that we adopted, that we unanimously adopted, set a timeline to complete this within five years. We considered an expedited timeline. We are now facing a budget deficit, and I think it's very important to consider that we are contemplating investing significant resources that have serious trade-offs when a local policy can and is no protection for any one neighborhood, for any group of people to go directly to a state process. In this case, in this exact moment, there are seven board members on the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. You weigh their voice in contrast to the over 200 community members who have signed a petition to oppose their application. Eight people, over 200 people, this is community input, eight people are determining, are determining a designation that affects 444 property owners. I asked the San Mateo Heritage Alliance to provide full disclosure and transparency about their community and process, and never received a single substantial response with any information about the basis of their decision and whether it was supported by community. I requested three times... I requested three times, this council, please consider this item for agenda, and did not have the votes to do so. 444 property owners, if you want to bring up the issue of equity, I take great issue, I take real issue with any one person talking about equity as it relates to historic preservation. Because the way I see it, in my neighborhood of North Central, a community equity priority area, historic designation that is being imposed on property owners will have a very severe displacement-forcing factor. Community members, low-income property owners, property owners on fixed incomes, my neighbors, if they have a historic designation imposed on them, for example, somebody who owns a Spanish-style house, they would be required to re-roof to original, original Spanish terracotta. That could cost four times more than alternatives for roofing. And I'm talking to you, Councilmember Hedges, as someone who I know really understands construction.
Councilmember Lee.
There are...
Can I make a suggestion? So just first, like on the roofing question, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily accurate, it depends on, like, if there's an actual project involved, if a new, a new historic rules are imposed, so as, but let's put that example aside. We have 30 minutes left before the regular meeting. I would suggest that you, you may want to wrap up your comments and then allow some of the other council members to speak, so there can be a group decision, whatever that decision is, as to which option.
My neighborhood and many people in my neighborhood have been pushed out, communities have been pushed out. There are financial implications to the city of San Mateo, our organizational budget, our ability to take care of our own city employees, the capacity that we have, the very limited and precious capacity we have organizationally, and, and the resulting quality of services that we can provide to our constituents. I'm very concerned that, that our council members are advan, are considering advancing this policy without an assurance that we, from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, that they will withdraw their application, without assurance from the council that we'll take a position to oppose any, any one application that, that bypasses our local ordinance. I have committed to, to, to the general plan, I voted for the general plan, I support historic preservation. I, I think we all do, I think we all support the things that we've already voted for. The question tonight is, are we talking about expediting expenditures that have very real trade-offs to our quality of service, to our budget, and to the community members as a whole, when the San Mateo Heritage Alliance has proactively refused any, any kind of transparency, any community survey, and any agreement to withdraw? I don't see a good faith effort coming from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, and if, in fact, I think that going with option one is rewarding eight people on the backs of 444 property owners. Those are my comments.
City manager, did you want to say something?
Just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, looking at the time.
Moving forward, yeah, thank you. Okay, so before I make my comments, Deputy Mayor, do you want to come with your comments? Sure, okay, great. You could go, thank you, Councilmember Lorraine.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everybody who's contributed to this discussion, who came today. I'd like to thank Director Doll and staff for the effort to produce some options after having adopted our general plan. I've heard a number of folks supporting option one, I've heard a number of folks effectively supporting option three. I've heard that, you know, we, we have an urgency in our city to avoid, you know, more historic homes going to lot splits or McMansions, and I've also heard that, that, you know, some don't want money spent on this if there's no guarantee people will follow it, or that if it would be bypassed, and that housing or other parts of our general plan should take priority. I, I agree that recent activity in our city has shown a debate and a divide on this issue, and that folks on both sides, of course, have come to council requesting action sooner rather than later. This is a priority in our general plan. I support completing actions 5.8 and 5.9 on, on a priority timeline, and indeed, council has already agreed to that in my mind. I've had the great privilege of being on this dais for a number of meetings in which the community has demanded action, but as I consider the voices of those in the room, I also need to consider the voices of others who may not be in the room and the best interests of the city as a whole. We have a budget with some uncertainty ahead, and we've adopted a general plan and housing element with a great many priorities. Even at option three, these actions are, you know, with regard to moving forward on protecting historical resources, identifying them and so forth, are effectively a higher priority than many other actions, goals in our general plan. You know, this would get completed before the sea level and our flood overlay zone, for example, the El Camino Real corridor, our bicycle master plan implementation and more. But in hearing the community, I think there's a case to be made for adding on to that priority, potentially. Option two appealed to me for that reason. It, it feels to me like what council members might expect from staff as a result of a blue-sky priority. You know, even though this wasn't a blue-sky ask, the community has, has asked for it, and we have heard some pain, so I would be supportive of that. I might even be supportive of option one if it seemed that all members of the community were aligned on pursuing local designation that comes out of a community conversation and meets their needs. But we got an email today from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance referring to the, quote, "pending Baywood Historic District." So that doesn't sound to me that everyone is committed to a valuable community process that leads to a local historic designation program that won't be bypassed. Without that commitment, I fear that we might be investing extra money and resources to something that may not even effectively resolve the issues the community has brought to us in the first place with regard to this topic. And, you know, we have a number of other real priorities in which people are really hurting out there and need the city to mobilize forces, bandwidth, and money. So I, I feel that if the council were interested in option two, I could see it. I haven't heard much from the community in support of option two, so at the moment, I feel like I'm two or three. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So I just extend that, of all the emails I've gotten from people that are both opposed and, and, and for the Heritage Alliance movement, that they were pretty focused on one. There were supervisors with a lot of names listed that they were for option one if the Heritage Alliance would withdraw their application. So I'm still stuck on one.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think the bulk of what I've heard, both today and in emails, is option one, and I just want to get this, get a system set up that bypasses some of the real heated arguments we've had here in the community.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Sure. There's a lot of divisiveness here, and, and I, I really feel, unfortunately, that anything except for option one isn't going to get a resolution. It's just going to leave us still in this limbo state of, of people fighting and arguing. So for that reason, I'm, I'm leaning towards option one. I, I, I don't want to, like, think that this is just, we're not doing this just for 400 people, we're, we're doing this for 39,723 residents in the city of San Mateo, and we need to give everyone equal, you know, equal value and footing and not be just, it's not just about this one neighborhood, it's about the city at large. We haven't done anything since 1989, that is way too long to pass up on something that we've been committing to doing, and we keep kicking the can down the road. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm, I'm going with option one for now.
Can I ask?
Excuse me, excuse me.
I would like to understand your, your answer to my question, Councilmember Newsom.
Excuse me, it is Deputy Mayor's time, and then if he's over, then it's my time. Thank you very much.
I had asked a question of the entire council, and I would appreciate if council would please respond to my question.
Through, we're just allowing everyone to have an opportunity to speak, and so if they want to finish their comments, then they can come back around to you, Councilmember Lee, again.
And I have not had a chance to speak yet.
And I'll also just remind the council that it's the mayor that runs the meeting. That's part of, that's one of the jobs of the mayors, to call on council members, make sure everyone has a chance to speak, so I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to speak, thank you very much. What we are hearing on the dais tonight is what we have been hearing in the community. That is absolutely easy to understand, and what is also easy to understand, for me at least, is that there is a lack of consensus about what an ultimate historic program should look like, and what should be involved, and how do we manage our resources, and all these different questions that have caused fear and confusion and discord throughout the city. The reason why I think option one is the right way to go is it will give everyone an opportunity to talk about what our historic resources program should be. So Mr. Alston tonight talked about how everyone in the city would embrace a local process because, and I'm assuming, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that, that would give everyone an opportunity to talk and say, where do we want to wind up on this spectrum? It would give everyone who has said, you know what, we want to, we want to make sure everybody's voice is heard, and that is an objection of many people, they feel not everyone's voice has been heard. This program would give everyone the opportunity to have their voices heard. We could, we heard tonight from a representative or the head of the Heritage Alliance that they would be very interested in working closely with the city and the community to develop this program. And I think you're hearing that there is a question as to what can be done with that. So I think there would have to be very clear demonstration by both the Heritage Alliance, by Less Red Tape, and by everyone else in the city, that, that we want to go into the development of this program honestly, that we want to have a lot of tough conversations, because there will be, but that everyone is interested in coming up with a historic program at the end of the day, that answers questions, that provides information, that gives people a clear understanding of what we do. And I think that the questions about what we do fiscally are very legitimate, but we are dealing with everything on this council that is legitimate, and there are, you know, there are lots of, lots of other things as well that are important. So I believe that actually option one is probably the best way we have, similar to Councilmember Hedges, of bringing our community together and deciding what San Mateo wants. And as I understand, it's really at the city level where, for the most part, the ordinance is going to determine what happens on a day-to-day basis with, with people's homes, with their properties, and that's where we should put our effort. So with that in mind, I believe, Councilmember Lee, you wanted to say something else?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought up bringing the need to have tough conversations, and I think that one of the, the unanswered questions still in this room, it sounds like there's a majority of council members who will support option one. I think that the community deserves to know, given, given that the local ordinance can be bypassed, how will this council treat applications that bypass our local ordinance? How will we respond to the San Mateo Heritage Alliance? Are we willing to move forward with option one on a condition that the San Mateo Heritage Alliance withdraw their application? I think that that is a very fair ask.
And I think you, Councilmember Hedges, have said, not at this time.
The sure fix, I think, is for the state to give preference in state legislation to a viable local ordinance.
And, Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, Newsom, do you want to comment?
Sure. I mean, I agree with what Rich is saying. We, we, we don't have authority ultimately, but we obviously can have an opinion kind as to what Councilman Hedges said. I, I feel like if we move forward with, with option one, I, I'm hope that they would put, that the Heritage Alliance would put the, the process on hold, at least until we could move forward and see where this is going. I mean, that, that seems like the right thing to do, but obviously, to what you've said, Councilmember Lee, there's no teeth and no way that I can regulate that one way or the other. I mean, I, I can have an opinion, but I can't, there's no enforcement. Is that accurate, or?
My understanding is that, is that council will be given an opportunity to weigh in on the application, and so we can have a formalized opinion, and also, we can obviously make a public request and make a decision tonight that would be conditional on the San Mateo Heritage Alliance's commitment to withdraw their application. That is absolutely within our purview.
I, I think I'm comfortable saying that I will have an opinion, and I will stick to my, I'll commit to having an opinion, but I, I don't, I'm not comfortable going beyond that until we actually are there.
Councilmember Lorraine, do you have any comment, or? No, okay, fine. And I guess where I would come out is that I think we should give this process a chance. I think there is a tremendous lack of trust, and the only way I know to build trust is by working together. So what I would propose is that we direct staff to go forward with option one, that we, or the city manager, perhaps and staff, reach out to both Heritage Alliance, Less Red Tape, and any other group, because this is a citywide process. This is not just a one-area process, and have discussions to gain commitment that there will be legitimate and wholehearted involvement in the development, and that we, I would actually like to, and this, we're almost past time, but I would really appreciate, and I think it would be helpful, Director Doll, once you have put together what the program might look like, to come back with an update so that there is more specificity. Because right now, saying we're going to do a program, even though you tried in, you know, one slide to tell us all, I think the more specificity we can have, the better it will be. And I think then, as we go into, to community input and outreach, this has to be incredibly robust, and we have to listen, and it has to be something that we come together. I've heard every group who's been up here tonight saying, if we had a local program that really had teeth, that was good, I could get behind it. I've heard some changes of opinion tonight from some speakers than what they said before, and that's fine, but I would like to give this program a chance, but be very mindful that everyone has to go into it with an honest effort, and that we really do have to focus... has to go into it with an honest effort, and that we really do have to focus on doing the local program now before there is any discussion of proceeding with the application. I believe that is what the Heritage Alliance had been talking about previously, the willingness to pause while we're doing the local program and really focusing. But I think it, it's going to take all of us to do that. So with that, yes, Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you. You know, I, I appreciate your acknowledging the, the lack of trust and the need for transparency. And, and I, I would like to ask, you know, my fellow council members, you know, to acknowledge, has, is anyone on this council a member of the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, or have, or has donated from your household to the San Mateo Heritage Alliance?
I don't think that's an appropriate comment. I, I don't think that's a question, City Manager.
I'll answer that.
Thank you.
Before we, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to try to sum up, sum up kind of what I'm hearing from Council Direction and next steps.
I've got one thing I, I need to say before.
So, well, Councilmember Hedges, thank you for answering the question. No, you're, no? And yourself, Madam Mayor?
I have not.
Has anyone in your household donated?
I don't think that's appropriate for you to be asking.
I think it's highly appropriate. I mean, can I please finish my statement? We're, we are talking about the public trust, right? We are talking about the need for transparency. It is a well-known fact that Mayor Nash, her husband, is one of the founders of the San Mateo Heritage Alliance.
Almo, that's enough. It really is.
That's the question.
The question is.
Everyone knows this, this is public information.
It is.
I'm looking at building, just getting direction and next steps.
I'm trying to get there, trust me.
So what I'm hearing from the council is Option 1 right now, but I think there's a status update that still needs to be taken before we embark on the journey. That's what I'm kind of hearing here. If I'm looking at overall timeline, by the time we're able to set this whole thing up and get an RFP and put things into place, we're probably looking at early December for a status update before we embark on this journey. Do I see nodding heads of looking at that?
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I, I just want to add something. And I, there's two things I don't like. It's cherry picking and reneging. And cherry picking means that people take things that they don't quite agree with over an overall good policy and try to kill the policy. I hope that's not going to happen while we go through this journey. And number two, I don't like two bites at the apple. And I would request that the Heritage Alliance withdraw their petition, they can always reinstate it as an offer of good faith while we go through this half million dollars.
And my, go ahead.
I'm done.
And what I would say is, yes, I had asked for further input on what it looked like as a first step toward doing the program, not to then come back and say, do we want to do the program or not? I'm just saying that would be my recommendation.
So there, I, I hear you on a status update. The other piece could be is that, you know, we could move forward with Option 1, but then I'm hearing Councilmember Hedges saying that you still want to see if Heritage Alliance is willing to move on their. No? Microphone.
I'm not going to try to force anybody to do anything based on what we're going to do going forward. That's of their own conscience. I'm saying that an act of, act of good faith and actually transparency that, that they believe in this process would be to withdraw the petition.
Okay, got it. So just for a next step, what I'm hearing is, is Option 1, we're moving forward that, and we'll provide a status update in December. At the meeting in December. Got it? We have our direction, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. And we will end the study session, 10 minutes to get ready for the next, the regular meeting.